Didn't speak to before. Sonia, are you still technically challenged? Or are you able to do the roll call?
Yeah, I'm just, yeah.
Ready? Yes, please. Roll call, roll call, please.
Gina Argento. Byron Bakawaski. Lisa Bormanti.
Here.
Gina Barrows.
Here.
Eric Rositis.
Here.
Irish Cabanera.
Yeah.
Phil Capernegro. Frank Cabon. Steven Chesler.
Here.
Michael Sisincera, Sisincera, whatever. Michael. Teresa. Sisicar, I can't pronounce her. Stephanie Cuevas. Martin Daley. Giovanni Diamaro.
Here.
Erin Drinkwater. Arta Divanovsky. Floyd Feng. Julamanda Foster. Cristo Garcia. Joe Ghosting. Joe Gross. David Helmig. Sabrina Help. Katie Denny Horowitz.
Here.
Toni Iglesia, here. Moses Inding. Robert Jeffrey.
Here.
Bosina Kaminsky. Bosina? Corey Canton. Paul Kinterborn. William Klaxvold.
Here.
Yolando. Marilya Lee Ainzah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yolo. Tina McKeever.
Here.
Adam Myers.
Here.
Santi Mazzelli.
Here.
Toby Markowitz. Rabbi David Niederman. Karen Nieves. Maria Dahmerick.
I'm here.
Janice Peterson. Bella Sables. Isaac Soper. Del T.
Here.
William Vega. William. Can't hear you, William. Yeah, he waved. Maria Viera. Simon Weiser. Nineteen members answered the call, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Sonia. First item on the agenda for the public hearing session is presentation from CarShare. CarShare provides an on-demand, short-term access to share fleet of vehicles. Stevie Feig.
Hi, how are you? I'm here.
I'm good, I'm good, how are you?
I'm just gonna share my screen. I'm here with my CarShare partners. We have Eric Rago from Getarounds and Tori Fishman from Zipcar. Oh, sorry, Adrienne from Getarounds. Am I able to? Okay, yes, thank you, great. Can everyone see this?
Yes, I can.
Great, great.
Yes.
Great, thank you. So I am Stevie Feig. I'm with the Department of Transportation. And I'm just gonna present a little background on CarShare and some statistics from our pilot program. And then talk about our permanent program. And then I'm gonna turn it over to our CarShare partners so they can go over their site selected and their respective companies. So just a little bit of background about CarShare. It provides on-demand, short-term access to a shared fleet of vehicles. It's typically through a membership and you can rent the car by the hour or for the full day. So DOT launched a CarShare parking pilot program in June of 2018 with Zipcar and Enterprise. We had 230 on-street spaces and 55 municipal parking facility spaces. Within Community Board One, we had 42 on-street spaces and 20 spaces in municipal parking facilities. As a whole, the two-year pilot averaged 24 trips per space per month with an average of 17 households per available vehicle per month. For the borough of Brooklyn, it was a little bit less of 21 trips per month per space with 17 different households per available vehicle per month. The pilot saw greenhouse gas emissions and vehicles' mile travel declined 7% and 6% respectively. Throughout the pilot, we worked with University of California at Berkeley to do a pilot evaluation. They provided three detailed customer surveys, one before, one during, and one after. And through these surveys, they concluded for every one CarShare vehicle, four personal vehicles were either not purchased or were sold. And so for your community board, we have 38 sites. Nineteen of these are renewal sites from the pilot program. And then we have 19 new sites between Getarounds and Zipcar. Like you guys already know, each site is two parking spaces and they're both located on the same place at the corner with regulatory signage, like the picture on the bottom left. And with that, I will turn it over to Adrienne from Getarounds.
Hi all, thank you for having us today. My name's Adrienne and I'm with Getaround CarShare. I get to work with cities and governments across the country. Stevie, just wanna make sure you can hear me, okay? Yes, okay, perfect. So a little about Getaround. Getaround is a round-trip car-sharing company. We provide affordable and accessible cars to people who need them. We were founded in 2009, really with the idea of doing something with all of our cars that sit around 95% of the day parked. So now we're actually in over 1,000 cities across the globe, including over 350 in the United States. And we've seen about 6 million trips taken since we started. We are quite different than a traditional car rental company. So Getaround is free to join. There's no membership fees, there's no monthly recurring fees, and your trips can be booked as little as one hour. So you're really only paying for the car for what you need it. That's perfect for grocery trips, going to the doctor, going to a meeting or somewhere you can't reach in transit. So how do you use Getaround? You upload your driver's license to our website or our mobile app on your phone and you're ready to drive in just a few minutes. You don't have to wait for a membership card to come to you in the mail. We also install a device into our vehicles. It's called the Getaround Connect. And that allows you to lock and unlock the vehicle remotely, which means you don't have to meet anyone in person. You don't have to wait in line to get your keys. You don't have to carry an access card. And of course, trips come with insurance and customer support. We have three major objectives at Getaround. I'll go over these quickly. First, to be an equitable mobility option. We want CarShare to be available to everyone. We also wanna reduce congestion and traffic on our roadways and be friendly to the environment. Really what that means is we wanna complement other modes of transportation and just be part of the ecosystem in New York. So in the first line, equitable mobility, when we look at Getaround users, we see we have a large portion of people of color, people that are lower income, and people who do not own their homes, they're renters. When we look at our users, we see that we do indeed sell cars or donate them after people get access to CarShare. And if they do have a car home, they use it way less after getting access to CarShare. And not only do we see people sharing their car, but we also see people sharing a ride. So environmentally friendly, we see people that put multiple people in their vehicles, so over two people or more in a car. We also see a lot of people that use Getaround don't have a car at all in their home. So this is perfect for someone who needs a car on occasion in their neighborhood. So what does that mean for you and this district? Stevie, you'll go ahead to the next slide. When we look at locations where we put CarShare vehicles, we consider lots of different things. First, the DOT set out criteria for us as CarShare companies and where we needed to put the vehicles. But we also wanna look at locations near other modes of transportation. So think bike share, subway, ferry, making it really convenient and accessible to get from one mode of transportation to the next. We also want the CarShare spaces to be in very visible locations. We know that about 30% of people find out about Carsharing just by seeing the signs on the street. So it's important that they're invisible locations, which also helps with safety if they're at well-let, well-traveled intersection. So through the DOT CarShare program, we have applied for locations across all five boroughs. And in your community district, we have requested 14 locations, which are on the map in front of you. As you can see, we went with a distributed approach, if you will. We tried to make sure that CarShare was available across this community district. And that's because we know over 70% of the district doesn't have a car home. So when I was talking about our users, we know we're a good fit for this district. And of course, we wanna be an affordable option for people when they use CarShare along with other modes of transportation. And really be an equitable option for people when they need it, it's close by and they can access it quickly. So in consultation with DOT, we have created an equity and outreach plan to make sure that it is indeed available for everyone. And so what we've done is create discounts for different types of users. If you just wanna try car sharing for the first time, we'll provide you a discount for that. We also want to partner with community organizations to provide discounts on car sharing. So think about a food pantry that has volunteer drivers, they might need to deliver food. Or a little league that needs to transport equipment or a senior center that takes people to activities. So we'd love to work with your community district on identifying those community organizations. And for underserved residents, providing discounts that are more than one times, so recurring discounts for people who live at NYSHA residents or who are on low-income assistance. So that way, we make sure not only is CarShare in your neighborhood, but it's available and accessible to everyone who needs it. We, of course, will also share materials with community organizations, your community district, and with DOT. We're going to collect regular feedback and give that to the DOT so we can understand what spaces and locations are working, what might we need to change in the future. And so we can really collaborate together on just educating people about CarShare, but also understanding how they're using it. With that, I will turn it over, I think, to Tori at Zipcar. I can answer questions about Getaround and Stevie can answer questions about DOT. Thank you.
Adrienne, and now Tori Fishman from Zipcar will present.
Good evening, I'm Tori from Zipcar. I manage public policy and partnerships for Zipcar in the New York City area. I'm a native Brooklynite coming to you live from CB2, unfortunately just south of CB1. But I really appreciate you, everyone here, taking the time to listen to our presentation tonight, to hear about Zipcar's participation in the pilot program and our expansion moving forward. So thank you to DOT and to CB1 for arranging this meeting and looking forward to answering any questions you might have. Zipcar has been in New York City for over 20 years. We've been partnering with the city for 10 of those. We have 2,500 vehicles in New York City, 60 for McSimmons, at 600 different locations, with 190,000 members across the five boroughs, 55,000 of those members right here in Brooklyn. At CB1 during the pilot program, we had 38 vehicles at 19 on-street sites. As Stevie mentioned, during the pilot, those vehicles saw somewhere around 20, 21 trips per month. In the last 12 months, we've seen that each vehicle has seen over 30 trips per month. So that's at least one a day, if not more. And the average reservation time has been, for all streetcars in CB1, has been approximately nine hours and 60 miles. And so that tells us that the people are taking Zipcars and using CarShare for purpose-driven trips. They're using it to go out of town to visit friends and family. They're leaving the neighborhood, they're leaving Brooklyn, they're probably leaving the city altogether. They're running important errands, they're going on day trips. And all of that is really a product of our focus on enabling simple, sustainable, and responsible urban living. 85% of our New York City members do not own a car. 25% of them got rid of their car after joining Zipcar. 35% of them postponed buying or leasing a car after joining because of their Zipcar membership. And 34% of them would buy a car if Zipcar disappeared. So if you look at 34% of members buying a car if Zipcar left, and 55,000 members in Brooklyn, 195,000 members, 190,000 members across New York City, that's a lot of personally-owned vehicles that we're keeping off of both Brooklyn and New York City streets generally. Moreover, our members tend to live multimodal lifestyles. They walk more, they bike more, they ride public transit more. 70% of our members report riding public transit at least five times a week. And during the pandemic, when we saw lots of our neighbors buying cars, contributing to some of the parking laws that we now experience, less than 5% of our members bought a car. They committed to the car-light or car-free lifestyle. And 95% of them maintain a public transit usage during the pandemic, as opposed to only 50% of non-Zipcar members across the city. Thank you. So for those of you unfamiliar with Zipcar, have never used it, we offer an easy, convenient, and affordable transportation option. You can download our app or go to our website, sign up instantly. You can book a car 24 hours a day, you can book it for an hour, you can book it for a day. Nationally, we find that our members save $784 a month compared to car ownership in New York City, where everything is more expensive. We know that number is much higher. Every reservation includes gas, dedicated parking spot, insurance options, maintenance, roadside assistance, and in the unlikely event you need it. And, you know, number of miles are included every day. Zipcar and CarShare generally enables all New Yorkers to have access to a car without the cost and the hassles of actually owning one. And we're excited about participating in this expansion and providing a convenient and affordable mobility alternative to every corner of New York City. And by using CarShare, by using Zipcar, members and New Yorkers get to have a more positive impact on the environment. By using CarShare, it results in fewer emissions, less driving, more carpooling. And all of that taken together results in cleaner air in our community, reduced congestion. And most importantly, in the context of this program, is more space. We have independent research that shows that every Zipcar put on city streets takes up to 13 personally-owned vehicles off the street. And allows for bigger, better uses of curb space and helps reduce traffic congestion across the region. So in CB1, we are hoping to renew our 19 sites from the pilot that were incredibly successful and help contribute to the fact that DOT is now making this a permanent program. And we're looking to add four sites, two in Williamsburg and two in Greenpoint. When you ask why these sites, how we selected them, generally speaking, the broad approach is that we're looking for locations that help us provide access that we're otherwise unable to serve. DOT had a list of stringent citing criteria, including proximity restrictions to various locales, whether it's a parking garage or a house of worship or a school. And we cross-reference that with our demand data. Every time somebody visits our website or opens our app and looks to book a car, but more importantly, when they look to book a car and can't book a car because none are available near them or the ones near them are booked up. All of those data points are tracked and we're able to see like a sort of heat map across the city of unmet demand. And so we're obviously targeting areas where there's unmet demand, places where CarShare is needed so that people can continue to live car-free and car-light lifestyles. Cross-reference with the citing criteria, it gives us where CarShare vehicles are in most demand. And specifically, where we are otherwise unable to place vehicles because we can't find a garage that will host CarShare or there's just aren't no garages available. And so that's generally the approach that we've taken when selecting these on-street sites. As part of our participation in the DOT expansion, we have an equity and outreach program that's focused on equitable and affordable access throughout the pilot. And moving forward, we'll continue to have our NYSHA program, which gives first-year free and driving credits and heavily discounted membership thereafter, discounted hourly rates on all cars at NYSHA locations. We also work with NYSHA to provide dedicated marketing materials in at least four different languages, to make sure that all NYSHA residents are aware of the amenity and that they're able to take advantage of it. As part of this expansion, we're excited to be launching a SNAP program, which will provide discounted membership to all SNAP recipients in New York. That's 1.7 billion New Yorkers across a million households in the city. Zipcar has a disproportionately positive impact on lower-income households. 71% of our lower-income household members say that Zipcars help improve their quality of life. So we're really excited to help contribute to that across the city and to help spread our equity program and allow people to have access to a vehicle. We'll also be staging a number of our vehicles and equity sites and we'll be launching its own specific programs and local community partnerships, including open streets, pedestrian plazas, community events. If anybody on this call or anybody in the CB has ideas on local organizations that we can partner with for any of those events, whether it's sponsoring an open street or being involved in some sort of community event. I would encourage you to reach out to me after this call. I'll post my email address in the chat box. But we just wanna make sure that, you know, we're part of the communities and we're working with our members in these communities to make sure that Zipcar can access every corner of the city. We'll also be working with DOT to promote on-street safety and pedestrian safety initiatives and their workforce development program. And lastly, 'cause I know I've been saying a lot here, we'll be doing support and outreach for awareness of the program. Some of that is self-explanatory, but it will include launch events, PR campaigns, locally relevant supplements to our national marketing strategy, social media, flyers like we do with NYSHA. We hope to work with local community partners to help spread the word. And these are just, you know, many tactics used to supplement our existing outreach programs. And the goal is broadly to drive awareness and engagement to make sure that everyone has equitable access to a vehicle across the city if they need it. So thank you for your time, I really appreciate it and look forward to answering any questions that you might have.
And this is a list of the new sites selected. And these are our renewals. And then open up any questions, comments?
Thank you, Stevie. Does anybody have any questions, the President?
I do, Steve Chesler.
Okay, Steve.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for the presentation. Sounds like a good initiative. Question for both Getaround and Zip in terms of what type of cars would make available? In terms of are they internal combustion engine or the electric viable hybrid? What type of cars are they?
Yes, hello, this is Adrienne from Getaround. So generally speaking, you can think of small four-dollar sedans à la Honda Civics, Toyota Corolla. We do have a small but growing percentage of electric vehicles and hybrids on the platform. But the majority of the vehicles you'll see in this program are internal combustion engine, although efficient because we have pretty stringent types of vehicles we allow into Getaround as a platform. I can let Stevie speak more about electrification in New York broadly across the city.
Hi, this is Tori from Zipcar, thanks for the question. So 80% of our fleet across the city are sedans, about 20% are SUVs. In the on-street program, we'll have both ICE engines and also hybrids. Of course, we can't put full EVs on the street because the on-street charging infrastructure doesn't exist yet. But in the future, when it does, we look forward to partnering with the city and with our partners across the city to place more EVs. I will say in the last quarter, we've already, Zipcar nationally has increased our EV fleet by over 10%. And we already have a large fleet allocation coming in for next year. We're hoping to, I'm personally hoping to steer a lot of those to New York City, no pun intended, to get more EVs on the city streets here and take ICE engines off the road. So I hope that answers your question. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question too, Madam Chair, Santi Michele.
I don't see your hand up, Katie?
Thank you, Chair. I had a question about the partnership opportunities with the Open Streets community, which if you're familiar with this area, it's a very vibrant open street network. And so what did you foresee as the potential relationship with the Open Streets community? Open Streets is part of DOT, so we work really closely, all things taking curbs that space. We work really closely with those units. And before we came to the board, we cross-referenced sites selected by the CarShare companies with our Open Streets team for applications that have been processed and applications that are in review. So there should not be any conflicts with Open Streets. And as both programs continue to grow, we'll just keep the conversation going and hopefully avoid any potential conflicts for space. Got it, thank you.
Charlie?
Sure, one question, probably was already done by Steve Chesler. Of course, I love to see more electric car. I wish this was going, you know, to become exclusively an electric car-based company for the future. Also, as a longtime member of Zipcar since its inception, I have to say that the issue affordability, I know it was commented tonight about being affordable. But also, there's been some major changes. You mentioned about people buying car during the pandemic. And I use Zipcar consistently, but what I noticed, when there was a larger demand, the price had been going up tremendously between taxes and insurance. Definitely, there's a lot of people, they don't fit in that income bracket to even be possible. So I'm fortunate enough and I've been able to afford it, but I believe it is not that affordable in that sense. So I wish you in the future could really start thinking about what it means to be really affordable. Certainly, it's more affordable than a Uber than myself. I had to go over the Williamsburg Bridge and it cost me $87 in time to go on a taxi practically, which seems completely unaffordable to at least to a lot of people that I know. But that's my comment, and I'd love to know, what is your definition of affordability? And how are the pattern of demand and price changes at that time considered?
Thank you. We have a pricing team that monitors and issues any sort of price changes. I can say our pricing, you know, while in the aggregate over time, of course, is subject to change in the short term. We don't have any demand or airline or surge-type pricing. If you book a car for 7:00 PM tonight at this moment, it's the same price as if you booked the car two months ago for 7:00 PM tonight. So there is a lot of consistency and reliability in our pricing. Obviously, in terms of price increases lately, there've been a lot of contributing factors to it, whether it's the price of gas or just the price of maintaining our fleet. But these things are always and constantly evaluated to make sure that the price is reflective of the cost of operating CarShare business. And even as costs go up or costs go down reliably, what our members tell us is that using CarShare, using Zipcar, is still a substantial savings over the cost of car ownership. And so, you know, we really hope that we can encourage more New Yorkers.
And to be a little bit specific, for example, from my own experience, you know, a rental rate of $5,000, $6,000 an hour seems to be affordable. But when there were those fluctuations and price can go up to over $25 an hour, and you'll know more, 'cause I don't know exactly right now, and with the taxes and all the other other costs, renting a car. And normally price, especially in our neighbor, has been going up to those rates. And so that's concerning. What is our definition of affordability? You know, that's all, that's my final comment, but thank you.
So I just wanna say, I think that's a really good point and talking point. And that's something that we can take back to the department and kind of talk through and potentially talk to the CarShare companies in the future. But I wanna thank you for pointing that out and what affordability really means to people.
See my hand, though?
Okay, I don't see it, Leanza?
Yeah, I just have a question. I'm not, you have a On-Street, From &amp; To, and Address. What is that? And instead, the cars are on the west, south side, or north side? What is that figure? You know, can you explain that? Because I don't understand that.
Of course, so these are the new sites selected. So the On-Street is the street that the car will be located on. And the From &amp; To are between north, so it'll be between North 8th and between North 7th. And this is just the approximate address, and it'll be on the west side of the street.
I see one that says Power Street, Judge Street, and Bushwick Avenue. That would be like one car that would take up a spot on that block?
Each site is two spaces, so each site has two cars.
My only problem is that between us, the rental bikes that take up a lot of the parking spaces, and now we're gonna have this that's gonna take parking space. It's gonna lead, it's gonna give a lot of problems to people that live in the community. that have their own car. We have enough trouble trying parking spaces. We have no garages. You know, it's, it's going to be, to me, an imposition on a lot of people. That's, that's one of my questions.
Were you speaking, Stevie?
No, no.
Eric Presley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I wanted, my, I, I'm the chair of the Transportation Committee, and I will be asking you to come to the, to the meeting next Thursday to, to unpack this issue a little bit fuller. But I wanted the full board to hear the plan before we took it to committee. And my main concern is, following up on Marie's concern, it's about parking spaces. We've had the loss of over, I forget what the number is now, but it's in the hundreds of spaces that have been lost to either bike share or restaurant sheds and other, other things that have happened in the community. There's a lot of anxiety about it for the existing car owners. And so although I'm glad to hear that we're not getting as many new space, new locations as I originally thought from the draft that went around back in the summer. Now, we're still looking at, let me understand, just make sure I understand. So it's nineteen spaces from Get Around and then additional spaces from Get Around. And then an additional four spaces for Zipcar. So that's a total of twenty-three new locations, meaning forty-six parking spots lost.
No, so it's a total of nineteen new spaces, fourteen from, fifteen from Get Around and four from Zipcar, for a total of nineteen new spaces.
Okay, okay. So it's a loss of thirty-eight spaces, which is not as bad as I, as I originally thought it was. But, and we can unpack this at committee. I don't want to take up a lot of time with this right now. But I will, what I will say to, to the board members that are on this panel right now is to, I'll ask you to, to submit this presentation to the board and have it forwarded tonight or tomorrow so that the board members can look at these locations and get back to the board office or to the Transportation Committee so that when we speak to you next week, we can drill down and say which of these new locations might be a hardship. As Marie pointed out, powers could be, could be an issue. And I'm sure there's, there's other spots that, that could be an issue just to, and, and I, for the record, I want to say that I support car share. I think it is, I think it is a good program. I think it, it does, you know, reduce the need for people to own cars in the city if they can share a car, and I'm glad to see it. I want to echo also Sante's concerns about affordability, what affordability means for, for our neighborhood. And we can talk about that as well. But, so again, I just want to, you know, emphasize to the, to the board members on the call to please look at this list. When it gets distributed, please let the committee know your concerns with these locations and join the, the meeting next week. But I do thank you for your presentation. I do overall support car share. But obviously, there are details that we need to be concerned with, and I look forward to speaking with you next Thursday. Thank you.
And also, I believe Adrian had mentioned this. We will be collecting monthly data on these sites. So we're going to understand the usage at a pretty granular level. And that's going to really determine what sites stay and what sites are relocated. So we're going to understand the usage. We're not just going to put these on the street and leave them. If sites are not being used, they'll be removed. Of course, we need several months of data to understand the usage, but we are not just going to leave these sites on the street if they're not being used.
That's, that's good. But I just want to use the example of City Bike where, you know, they had looked at underutilized spots versus sites that needed to be, that could use a bike share rack. And, you know, we're still, I mean, the pandemic aside, you know, we can, we can put that caveat in there. But it's the same situation where, because it's a private company that's been a little bit of foot driving on relocating underutilized sites for, for sites in need of bike share. And I know, I realize you're a different entity altogether, but I hope that, you know, once we have these evaluations on the, on the usage, that we can really go back and, and say, this is working, this is not working. And we can have that conversation again next year, once we know what's happening. But thank you again.
Okay. Thank you, Stevie, for this presentation. I have a question. And you have dedicated spots for the Zipcars. What happens if a driver bring the car back and there's another vehicle parked in the spot? What's the driver supposed to do?
The driver should call the respective car share company. And that car share company will either direct them to park in the nearest legal parking spot. Or if there is a lot or private garage close that the respective car share company has a relationship with, they may direct the driver to park there. And the driver should also file a three-one-one complaint. All illegally parked cars or block spaces, I get those reports. And so sites that have repeated block spaces, we will ask, as the Department of Transportation will escalate it to our liaison at NYPD.
Thank you. Adam Myers? Adam?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was interested in the data that you guys shared about the relationship between a rideshare space added and the number of privately owned cars that apparently went off the street with access to those cars. And I, I guess I'm not sure what my precise question is, but is, is the idea really that adding these thirty-eight or so spots are going to take some multiple of that of other cars off the streets? Because if so, that seems like it goes a long way towards solving the parking problems that we all face. But maybe that's not the right reading of the data. And so any comment that you guys have on that?
Of course. So I can speak to our Berkeley, I can speak to our Berkeley survey, and I can share that with the board as well. It's a, it's a much more complicated equation than I can, can explain on my own. So I really encourage everyone to read the evaluation. But we provided car share pilot members with three dedicated surveys, one before, one during and one after. And that spoke to their car share habits, car share specific, and then their habits prior to joining car share. And so through those surveys, through all the numbers, Berkeley leans that for every one car share vehicle on the road, up to four personal cars were either not purchased or sold. So it's really a combination. And from our pilot, we learned that one of these cars served seventeen different households. So that, there's the potential really for people to sell their cars. Of course, people who are not using their car every single day for work and commuting purposes, but people perhaps who use it once or twice a week or on the weekends, perhaps now with car share available close by, maybe they won't need to own their car. So that's, that's what we learned from our Berkeley survey, our pilot. And that's the hope for expanding on car shares, providing alternative modes.
Thank you, Stevie. I see, I see no more hands. Are there any other questions? Yes, Madam Chair, Sonia. Who, who conducted, who performed the survey and who were they serviced, who did they survey?
So we worked with the University of California at Berkeley, their research team, and they surveyed car share participants. Again, I can share that survey. I don't have the exact language on hand, but I can share that survey with the board. So you can read the, read the evaluation and, and understand.
Thank you, Sonia. Are there any other questions?
Yes, please, Madam Chair. On behalf of, there's an attendee who attempted to raise their hand, and it's not appearing. So Erica's, Madachek's asking about the responsibility for maintenance and safety regarding to the vehicles.
You're muted, Stevie.
I can let the car share companies answer on respective safety and maintenance.
Hi, this is Tori from Zipcar. We have a, like a robust operations team that goes out and inspects the vehicles several times per week. Additionally, every time a member returns a vehicle and rents it, they have a, like a short survey on their phone to let us know about the condition of the vehicle, whether it's a mechanical problem or just the interior sturdy. All of that's reported to make sure our team can address it right away. We do everything we can to provide the absolute best customer service experience possible. So if there is a maintenance vehicle, we take that vehicle out of service immediately and either get it fixed immediately or replace it with a operational vehicle while that other vehicle is out of service.
This is Adrian, exactly the same as Tori here at Get Around. I'll also add that we, as car share companies, are responsible for cleaning around the space. So leaves, snow, that sort of thing, graffiti on sides, on signs. We'll take care of that as well.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation. Have a great holiday. Be safe, be healthy. Next item on the agenda is Domino's Refinery, two ninety-two Kent Avenue, David Nambino.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, everyone, for your attention tonight. If somebody could, there's another participant, our architect, Dominic Kozerski. If you could allow him to share a screen, that would be amazing. Tonight, we're here concerning the refinery at the Domino's site. We are in the process, as I'm sure many of you have seen, of, you know, constructing and rehabbing and constructing that building for commercial occupancy. We started a number of years ago. That was permitted by this community board in December of 2013. And then we twice came before this board for, to approve the landmarks, the landmark refinery building designs. And we were twice approved here. Tonight, we're here simply to amend that permit. As you've seen, we've been building it out for a couple of years. We're, we're beginning to market the building for, for office tenants. As part of that, you know, it's clear that the building needs some modest signage along Kent Avenue. So we are, you know, are here tonight for you to review the plans for signage along Kent and on the refinery building as a precursor to going in front of LPC probably early next year. So if you, if, if, I'd like to introduce Dominic Kozerski, who's our architect, who can walk you through plans. We're, of course, here to answer any questions, big and small, about this project. Dominic?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. It gives me great pleasure to talk to you about this addition to the building that, that we've been working on. Where the designers, that the developer, Two Trees, has asked, they've asked us to work on the lobby entrance sequences and, and tenant spaces within this building. We're based in New York City and have been in business for twenty years and worked on various buildings and interiors in New York City, many of them with landmark components. So in putting this design together, we've tried to be as thoughtful about not just the building, but, but this additional marquee with regards to the streetscape. So an overall elevation of the, the building, I'm sure everybody's quite familiar with this profile now as the structure's been up for some time. And what we're discussing here at the bottom of the drawing, you can see the note that says proposed marquee. So this is the, the element that, that we're going to be talking about today. So the marquee, we feel, is sensitively scaled for the size of the building, which, as you all know, is at least a block and a half long. And, and the marquee, we have some close-up images. It spans these three existing arches because the entrance to the building is actually through those three existing arches. So zooming in with more, more detail, in elevation, you see the, the length of the canopy, a concept about signage to give a wayfinding point for visitors to the building. And you can see the scale of these existing arches. So actually, people can enter through any one of these five arches. The three larger ones are more prominent and the other two are, are less prominent. And the, the canopy is twelve foot eight above the sidewalks. There's plenty of headroom clearance. And, and we also have developed detailing in order to manage rainwater and, and all those other aspects. So now looking at the same drawing in, in color as the 3D rendering. You know, the, the brickwork is, of this building is, is, you know, very notable. The corbeling is all part of the, the brick language of this building. And, and we felt that the, the canopy should have a very low profile, but could have a materiality that responds to buildings, some industrial buildings of the time where steel was used to tie brick structures together. And indeed, it was also used to protect the brick corners of arches. And there are, there are, and we have some photographs later on the presentation that show where like black steel is referenced also in this building. So now looking along Kent Avenue, you start to see the, the scale of the, of the piece. There's going to be integrated lighting into it, but the design is really a, a flat sheet of steel with these ribs that hold it up and connect it back to the building. And just, and, but the actual canopy is held away from the brick by a certain, by a few inches in order to kind of let the, the brick breathe behind. And there's also a lighting element there that uplights and downlights the brick. So the canopy is kind of disjointed away from, from the brick in that way. And there's also a proposal to change the, change the flooring underneath that canopy. So here in plan, you can see that this is the outline of the canopy. So it's seven feet deep, sixty feet long. And then the, then the canopy is held away from the brick by these fins by twelve inches. So that's that breathing space that I was talking about. This arrow here just denotes the pitch and the pitch back for, for rainwater. So now sort of going down one more level, seeing the sidewalk. The idea is that we would have a granite cobblestone, granite tile that would delineate the entrance to the left and the right would be the standard city sidewalk. And the idea is, although not part of this meeting, is that this granite flooring would then continue into the building, into the building lobby. And now this is a plan, looking down on the top of the, of the canopy. So you see the blackened steel, which again, traditional material used in certainly at the time when this building was built, to a way of protecting steel from rust. There'll also be a anti-corrosive coating over the coating over the steel. So we we don't expect any rusting issues. But the look of the steel will have this very authentic kind of aged aged patina, which we think is important as well, so that it doesn't, so that it it matches the patina of the of the brick and the overall sense of of materiality of the building. So just just a little bit going into the detailing, you see these metal fins that are that are holding up this plate of steel. And not to go too deep into it, but you can see the the way that lighting has been incorporated in. And we're really showing this just to, you know, show the level of thought that's been put into this as a as an element. So drainage will be, water drained from the canopy will be passed back through the wall and then water shed on the inside. And actually, we're putting that rainwater into planters that we have on the on the lobby side of the building, just as a sort of a nice detail for that rainwater. So now looking at the the real photograph, and and this band here denotes the level of the where the marquee will be. These are the existing arches. And then here in the center photograph, you can see that those plates of steel that are mounted on either side of the larger arches, which is part of the original fabric of the building, which were there to, you know, protect the brick from, and this was like also a blackened steel. So we'd be using that that same language. And then lastly, just a little bit looking at some precedents, some of these, I think actually most, all of it, both these projects are both the projects that went through the Landmarks Commission. In Dumbo Empire Stores, again, the the language of warehouse buildings and 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 industrial buildings of the time, blackened steel, brick corbels, brick detailing. And then here at St. Anne Warehouse, also on on Water Street in Dumbo, you can see the the ties that are tying the brick structure again together. Again, traditional detailing together with the together with the shutters, all referencing back to industrial typology of the time. Thank you.
Happy to take questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Katrina, I have a question. Thanks for the design. And it's it's a really elegant design. And my first question is, was there an original canopy in the design that went through landmarks before? And then can you explain exactly how the canopy attaches to the brick? I didn't get that.
Sure, there was no marquee associated with the original LPC approval. That's why we need to amend the the permit now. You know, as as we have, you know, finished, starting to finish the building, it'll be done in in less than a year. You know, we and we moved to to start marketing the office space. You know, it was clear that we needed a marquee, both to protect the entrance and designate the entrance and and make it, you know, a destination for for pedestrians, et cetera. So this is new. And then I'll let Dominic talk about the attachment to the building.
So the the idea of the attachment is that the 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 fins are welded to a steel plate, and the steel plate is bolted back to the brick structure.
Okay. And will you be bringing this to the committee while you so we can look at it more closely?
Yes.
Katrina, are there any other questions? I see no hands. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you so much for your presentation. Have a great holiday.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity.
You're welcome. Next item on the agenda, item number three, the applicant withdrew. Is there any speakers on liquor license?
Yes, Alicia Lind.
You just broke it.
Alicia?
Is that us?
You're unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, did not realize it was time for me to speak. Apologies.
You got two minutes?
Okay, excuse, sorry. Good evening to everyone on the community board and to our friends and neighbors. Thank you for being here this evening, and I hope this finds you all doing well. Earlier today, I walked by our neighbor at 639 Lorimer Street, 42 Jackson Street, and noticed that a notice of a meeting for tonight for this liquor application was posted on the building today for the meeting scheduled tonight. Both my family and the employees and owners of the City Kids Preschool and Learning Center that is the neighboring building were surprised at the lack of notice. So I hope they were able to make it here tonight, as they've expressed concerns to me about the children being so close to a drinking establishment, especially since there are more than six bars and restaurants in the immediate area, with another one slated for 642 Lorimer directly across the street. We're over served with options as it is. We're overrun by rats and the mess that comes along with them. I am a neighbor of this building, and I have sadly personally sustained six plus years of stop and start and sometimes illegal construction violations and thousands of dollars of damage to our property as a result of the carelessness and recklessness of the building owners. The building at 639 Lorimer Street is not legally even allowed to be leased. According to the DOB website, it doesn't have a certificate of occupancy. And we know it doesn't have its own sewer hookup, potentially causing problems for the tenants at 639 Lorimer, and certainly to my family at 637 Lorimer Street. We worry every day that this illegal sewage line could cause health problems for our children and our animals. Thus, we feel the need to put it on the record with both the DEP and the DOB that the owners of 639 Lorimer Street, 42 Jackson Street have known about this for years and have knowingly done nothing about it. I have recently, as a result, sent a letter to both the Department of Buildings and the Department of Environmental Protection, detailing the violations and illegal construction at both of these properties, and would be happy to send you a copy. Of course, you can look at the DOB website, and you can see for yourself that the landlord of these two buildings seems to feel that he has no need to follow regulations nor respond to violations. As you can imagine, this combination of neglect and lawless landlord mixed with an unknown LLC that's applying for this license is a poor recipe for our community. I hope this isn't the type of business we encourage in this area. And I hope that you all can help us protect my family and the neighbors who are affected by this application. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next speaker is Adam Lind. Adam Lind, you are muted.
Hey, everybody. Hello?
We can hear you.
Hello?
We can hear you, Adam.
All right, thank you. Listen, and I don't want to waste anybody's time. My wife is just really eloquent in what we're talking about. And again, we just really encourage everybody to look at the DOB. Unfortunately, this owner has a long history, and it's going to be very concerning to everybody around for anybody involved with him to have a license. And really appreciate you guys allowing us to speak.
That is it for the liquor licenses.
Thank you. That concludes our public hearing session. We'll go into our board session. Can we have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Can I have roll call, please, Sonia? Gina Argento, Gina Argento, Byron Bakawaski, Lisa Bonmanti.
Here.
Gina Barrows. Gina. Eric Rosades. Iris Cabarela.
Yeah.
Phil Copernegro. Frank Carbone.
Here.
Steve Chesler.
Here.
Mike Cuccinelli. Teresa Sin卡达. Stephanie Cuevas. Ronan Daly.
Here. Here.
Yes, Giovanni Di Amato.
Here, here.
Evan Drinkwater. Arthur Dibranowski. Arthur Dibranowski. Loy Ping. Julia Amanda Foster. Crystal Garcia. Joe Goldstein. Joe, Joe Gross. David Helmick.
Yes.
Sabrina Help. Katie Danny Horowitz.
Here.
Sonia Iglesias, here. Moses Zending. Robert Jeffrey.
Here.
Bosina Kaminski. Bosina? Corey Canton.
Here.
Paul Kiltaborn. William Claxton.
Here.
Yolando. Marie Lee Angza, Marie?
Here.
Yolo. Trina McKeeber.
Here.
Adam Myers.
Here.
Dante Machelli.
Here.
Toby Makowicz. Toby?
Here.
Thank you. Rabbi David Needleman. Karen Nieves. Maria Domeric.
I'm here.
Janice Pearson. Bella Sables. I see you. I can't hear you. Yes, thank you waving. Isaac Sofa.
Here.
Thank you. Delty?
Here.
Thank you. William Vega. William? William Vega? Okay, can't talk. Maria Viera. Simon Weiser.
Here, hear me?
Yeah, thank you.
And Gina Barrows is here. Gina Barrows is here.
Thank you, Gina.
Can you confirm that you got Frank Carbone?
I got you.
Thank you.
William Vega was waving.
I got William. We can't speak in Bella. Madam Chair, 25 members answered the call. Thank you, Sonia. Can I have an approval of the agenda, please? Can I have approval of the agenda? Sonia?
Approving.
Sonia and William Vega. Can I have approval of the, can I have approval of the minutes, please? Can I have approval of the minutes, please?
David Needleman.
William Vega.
Rabbi Needleman and David and.
William Vega. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm Madam Chair. I didn't get the rabbis. So makes. Rabbi and and. Yeah, I didn't get him on the roll call.
Oh, I, okay, I was there and I said yes.
I didn't hear you. Sorry. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the public session. Can I have the public speakers, please, Joanna?
Anika Batson. Anika Batson. Not present. Marlene Gonzalez. Not present. Jessica Holt. Not present. Next is Mariann Saikid. Not present. Esther Osavo. Not present. Prince Kabina. Prince?
Present.
You're unmuted.
Yeah, present.
Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Prince Kabina. I'm coordinator from the CCRV. Just I just wanted to share those a little brief overview of the CCRV to to, you know, to the community. So CCRV is a city agency independent from NYPD. So we investigate, mediate, and prosecute any allegations of the NYPD officers or members of the force. So just wanted to share that, you know, just a brief of the overview of the CCRV, because I don't have enough time to really get into it. I just wanted to let people know that we're here. We complete, right now, we take complaints of a new jurisdiction, which is bias based policing and racial racial profiling. Because this new initiative that we added on to our jurisdiction to investigate regards to any type of misconduct. I believe my my info is p.kabina.ccrv.nyc.gov. And that could be contact for anybody need any type of presentation or more information. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Next speaker is Gisela Casanova. Not present. Last speaker is Lauren Camito. Lauren, you're muted.
Thank you. Hello. So I'm Lauren Camito. Thank you for letting me speak here tonight. I really appreciate the opportunity to tell you about the stuff we've got going on at the Brooklyn Public Library and let you know about upcoming construction at the Leonard Library. So I'll start with the things we have going on system wide. It's our 120th, 25th birthday this year at the Brooklyn Public Library. We've been the library for Brooklyn since before it was a borough. And we counted down our 125 most borrowed items. The most borrowed item the whole time we've existed is Maurice Sendax, Where the Wild Things Are. We have also opened up volunteer opportunities for reading coaches with for children to help children ages five to 11 expand their vocabulary and reading comprehension skills. And for people who are interested, BPL's Adult Learning Center is partnering with SUNY Brooklyn Educational Opportunity Center to offer a virtual free 15 week intensive medical billing and e-records class for spring 2023. to offer a virtual free 15-week intensive medical billing and e-records class for spring 2023. Um, you can reach out to me at the library if you'd like to access that or have any questions about how to access that this spring. And then the thing that I'm really here to talk about is, uh, at the Leonard Library, we are going to be uh, closing for two years, beginning at the end of December to replace our HVAC system, repair the roof and restore our historical ceiling. We have a lay light up under our terrible drop ceiling that we're excited to have revealed and available for the public to get light in the building again. And we're also, the staff particularly, all very excited to have air conditioning. But that is going to be a two-year project and we will be out in the community while we're closed. We're going to have the bookmobile service every other Thursday, beginning on February 2nd. Uh, and if you follow us on Facebook, we will be sharing where we'll be popping up in the neighborhood on our Facebook page. Happy to answer questions people might have if they need me to. Um, and you can also find me at the library. If you have any questions, track me down and I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Lauren. Next item on the agenda is committee reports. Board budget, Maria Viera. S L A. S L A. Environmental protection.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we have, uh, three significant items that the committee met and addressed on November 29th. We were one short of a quorum, so we had, um, some consensus recommendations. The first item is a brownfield cleanup program at 470 Kent Avenue. It's a 3.6 acre site ordered by Schaefer Landing, Kent Avenue, um, Division Avenue and Walabout Channel. It, um, at one point it was a manufactured gas plant site in the late 1800s. After that, it sure, uh, stored raw sugar as part of the Schaefer Brewing Complex. And more recently, it was certified lumber. The, um, the site has very small remnants of contamination from the manufactured gas plant, which is, is good. There were some, um, byproducts of that in the very, on the kind of near Walabout Channel. Uh, but mostly it was laden with petroleum, some chlorinated solvents and heavy metals in both the soil, uh, the groundwater, soil and soil vapor. So the, um, there's already interim remedial, uh, remedial measures that have already, are in progress. And so this final, uh, action work plan, um, aims to finish excavating an enormous amount of soil from the site and de-watering. And then the, um, the plan is to build a three-tower residential structure um, with a waterfront public access area along the, uh, the channel. And so they have to do a cleanup. It's track four, you know, for restricted residential. And so, yeah, they're just going to move, remove an incredible amount of soil and de-water. And the building will essentially serve as the, the cap. And, uh, that type of remediation will also prove to, uh, serve the public access area, which won't have hardscape above it. Um, there was a small, still kind of hotspot near Kent Avenue National Grid, which acquired Brooklyn Union Gas, which owned the manufactured gas plant, is looking into that. There's a, the developers, the, the participant in the cleanup, National Grid is, is involved in some shape or form, but that is not known to DEC, um, who gave the presentation by Gerald Pratt, who's the project manager. So, um, so essentially, you know, the, we covered all the bases. They're washing trucks on site. And, uh, they didn't really give a timeline as far as completing the remediation, but everything, you know, seemed in order. You know, they are removing underground storage tanks. Uh, the building is already demolished. So, um, if there are remnants of contamination, they'll be using oxygen release compound to, um, essentially break down remaining contaminants. There will be waterproofing system below the building slab and the outside subgraves, subwalls, some walls, um, site covers. And they're installing a new bulkhead along the channel to prevent, basically to stabilize the land and prevent off-site migration of contamination. And they'll do endpoint sampling afterwards, groundwater monitoring. And again, do more oxygen release compound treatment if, um, there's a need. There's, you know, committee members asked about odor controls. Those are in place, hosing down sprinklers. Wastewater will be released into the sewer system. And, uh, yeah, that was essentially, you know, the gist of it. Um, Laura, you know, Laura Hoffman, who's a non-board member of the committee, you know, is a longtime resident and, um, huge in the, you know, environmental advocacy, noted that, you know, just the history of contamination and health issues in the neighborhood. So we, um, we approved a motion to submit a comment to DEC, which is due on December 10th, noting the past legacy of environmental his, health issues in the district. Developers and the agency must do its best to protect people's health. So I need a motion, um, and a vote on that.
Uh, I motion, it's Katie.
Sonia seconds.
Katie and Sonia. Roll call folk, please.
Gina Argento. Baden Bakewaski. Lisa Bonati.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Eric Rosades.
Yes.
Iris Cabarela.
Yes.
Phil Capone Negro. Frank Carbone.
Yes.
Stephen Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Chinchelli. Teresa Sin卡do. Stephanie Cuevas. Ronan Daly.
Yes.
Giovanni, uh, Giovanni Di Amaro.
Yes.
Evan Drinkwater. Arthur Dibranaski. Lloyd Peng. Julia Amanda Foster. Cristo Garcia. Joe Goldstein. Joe Gross. David Helmick.
Yes.
Sabrina Help. Katie Danny Horowitz.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias, yes. Moses Zending. Robert Jeffrey.
Yes.
Bosina Kaminski. Corey Canton.
Yes.
Thank you. Paul Kiltaborn. William Clagsville.
Yes.
Yolando. Marie Liaison.
Yes.
Yolo. Trina McKeever.
Yes.
Adam Myers.
Yes.
Sante Machelli. Sante? Toby Markowitz. Toby?
Yes.
Rabbi David Needleman.
Yes.
Karen Nieves. Maria Dahmerick.
Yes.
Janice Peterson. Bella Sables. Okay, Thambeela, Bella, thumbs up?
Okay.
Isaac Soffer. Del T.
Yes, also I have a message from Maria Viera. She's listening, but she's having some problems, so she cannot unmute and she cannot go on video.
Okay. Thank you. William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Viera. Simon Weiser.
Yes.
My vote is yes, Del.
Oh, you're on. We can hear you.
Oh, okay, great.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you. 25 yes, zero no, zero consensus, zero refusal, motion passes.
Thank you. I have a couple more items. Uh, the next item is a pretty major, uh, major, um, situation. It was, it was, we had a presentation from project manager from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers related to their, um, New Jersey, New York, New Jersey Harbor and tributaries, coastal storm risk management feasibility study draft. Essentially, for two years, you know, the, the Corps, along with New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, New Jersey's equivalent agency, Department of State in New York and City Department of Climate and Environmental Justice, been, you know, studying, you know, the effects of Hurricane Sandy and just anticipating what future major storm events and storm surge, um, impacts might be. And so they've come up with, um, they originally had a major plan of installing these massive, uh, gates across, across the major waterways. You know, and at like the beginning of, of New York Harbor and other places, and decided that, uh, maybe it's not as feasible as utilizing smaller storm surge gates and tie-in technology. So they offered five alternative plans to that. Um, they're leaning towards, uh, Plan 3B, which is mostly the storm surge gates and tie-in technology, tie-in infrastructure, which is seawalls, flood wells, flood, uh, flood walls and levees and, uh, berms that will tie into that. And the one that they're leaning towards is in the middle in terms of cost and a little bit above the median in terms of percentage of benefit. Um, the one with the highest benefit is double the cost, and this one is projected to cost $76 billion and cost, take decades to, to build. The reason we asked them to come into the committee is because one of the target areas is Newtown Creek. They're proposing building 170-foot wide storm surge gate, uh, across the creek that'll rise 17 feet out of the water. And during storm surges, like a hurricane Sandy type event, they'll close the gate. And then what was, what happens with this type of infrastructure, it'll cause what's called induction flooding, sort of like collateral damage, so to speak. So they build an tie-in structure to kind of mitigate those, those issues. So the, what they're proposing is building seawalls and levees, um, basically go along the creek, up into Newtown Barge Park, across the park, down DuPont Street, a 17-foot wall coming out of the water from DuPont all the way down to Kent Street. And then they'll have a, um, a, that's a seawall, and then a flood wall go up Kent, a levee going across transmitter park, and then another flood wall going all the way up, uh, Greenpoint Avenue, beyond West Street, uh, to Franklin Street. To say that is drastic and alarming is, is an understatement. And we essentially, the deadline for making comments for this, uh, proposal for the entire New York area is January 6th, um, which is very tight. Uh, because obviously the consequences of what happens here are incredible. You know, you know, in the discussion that ensued, you know, committee members emphasized that, you know, Newtown Creek is by the most polluted waterway in the, in the United States in terms of just the sewage pollution and the chemical pollution. And so during Hurricane Sandy, Greenpoint was inundated with that water. And so they're, they're emphasizing in reducing that flooding. But, you know, the, the other side of it is though we're, you know, we're losing, uh, creating an oppressive situation in the parks, which we fought so hard, and the waterfront public access areas that are going in front of the private developments. And also, you know, there were, uh, uh, community members wondering, so why isn't the, you know, the infrastructure go further down Greenpoint, uh, beyond Greenpoint Avenue down to Bushwick Inlet, um, where there was enormous flooding from the inlet, um, throughout, you know, that part of Greenpoint. And the project manager, his name was Bryce Weissmiller, cited cost. That would just be enormous cost to do that. Um, another community member, Catherine Thompson, said, what about, um, you know, managed retreat? He said that would cost hundreds of billions of dollars, maybe more trillions to do that. Um, Sante Machelli, um, board member, not a committee member, you know, cited alternatives like in Venice, Italy and in the Netherlands, where they have gates that lower and rise depending on the situation, that maybe, you know, we just need to be more creative about it. And so I, I urge you, um, to look at the committee report. There are a lot of attachments. In the actual report itself are slides isolated with the maps. There are satellite, Google satellite um, images of the land, and you can see the outline of where this tie-in infrastructure will go. And yet, and so we really need to have, we need more time to really digest and to really work through the details and weigh, weigh the consequences of what we're doing. And, and we want to provide you the details of what the, these infrastructure will look like off, you know, off the shoreline, within these parks, up these streets, you know, and then what happens to the properties that have these, have these structures, um, conceivably in front of them. So, so the overwhelming, you know, consensus was this is not enough time. And the, um, the Army Corps said that they are considering extending the deadline, um, two months, which we would welcome. Um, so our, we, uh, put forth a motion to request that the deadline be extended. And I would, I don't know, I don't know what the proper process is, but I would like to offer that the, we note that the extension should be at least six months. I feel like that is a proper amount, window in which to, to further study. And that, um, we urge our elected officials from the city level, uh, state level, and most certainly our federal level, Nity Velasquez and Senator Chuck Schumer, you know, intervene in our behalf to get this extension. So I need a, a motion and a vote to approve this, um, uh, comment and request to the Army Corps of Engineers.
I. Motion to request six months.
Can you guys, excuse me, can you give me a minute?
Yeah, also, yeah, please, if you have que, uh, questions.
No, excuse me. I just wanted to know the motion, exact wording of the motion.
To request, uh, a, an extension in the comment deadline for the, um, storm risk management plan, six months. And, um, to, um, urge our elected officials from the city, state and federal level to, um, intervene in our behalf to push for this request.
Steve, I have a question. If Madam Chair, if I'm allowed to. Now, Steve, in, in this, um, in this request, are we asking for the possibility of, uh, additional study, uh, for design that have less impact on our environment? Uh, as we mentioned, you mentioned, thank you, the, the Moos in Venice. Uh, they will not stand 17 feet tall and would not have the same impact, permanent impact. I know these are big shortcuts, uh, and thank you for organizing the meeting. I also discover that, uh, they don't have a great history of being very successful. They propose all this type of intervention. They can have impact on 50 years, but they don't have the history. And, and I believe my question at night about the Moos in Venice, which is, uh, it's a more advanced, I know it's a cost, but I believe this is our environment, is our, and I believe it's something. So I was wondering, is this motion including, uh, asking them to do other additional study? Cost is not?
Well, I think it's, the idea is to give us more time to come to formulate, you know, the, you know, detailed questions and to do our, and allow our, for the board to do it and the committee to do its research, including what you just, just mentioned. Cause I, you know, I just have a whole, I've been compiling questions. Just, and I think, and, and considering alternatives that you, you have mentioned and beyond. So, so I feel like the, yeah, I think we just, we just need time. And so that's why I feel like if we, if we get the time, then we can take a deep dive into, you know, what you've mentioned.
Thank you, Steve. And also, as a, as a general comment for everybody, so my invitation is, uh, to get involved because something serious. It seems the one will be probably protected, as Steve mentioned, it will be the development. It should never have been there on that scale. But the reality, the, uh, the. But the reality, the, the consequences of having those type of barriers shouldn't be there anyway could be affect actually the smaller scale neighborhood, which right now it seems to be outside of the flooding maps, but it could become as a consequences of protecting dead developments that they actually don't pay taxes, not going to pay tax for the next thirty years, and we're going to have to pay this with our federal tax contribution somehow. But very important, but I will second support this motion, Steve.
Thank you. Also, I just want to add a key part of, you know, what happened in the committee was the Newtown Creek Alliance through Executive Director Willis Elkin submitted some comments to the committee. One of the real worries is when that gate closes on Newtown Creek, what happens to all the sewage? Because as you know, during a rainstorm, just a little bit of rain, the, you know, sewage access to the treatment plant over, you know, over the other side of McGuinness redeverts all the sewage to the waterways. It's just dumping raw sewage. And a lot of, and there are thirteen of these CSO outlets in Newtown Creek, four of the most, you know, the biggest volume in the entire city. And there's a long-term pollution control plan that's building these huge retention tunnels underneath Queens to reduce that by seventy percent with other measures. And then there's the superfund pollution, chemical pollution that there's still analyzing. And starting in like twenty thirty-two, they're supposed to begin cleaning up the creek. So how, they're, they're putting forward, how will that, what were the consequences of having this gate there affect that? Because part of the, you know, the regular cleaning are the tides and the currents coming in and out of the creek. So I'm sorry, that was a key point that I left out and that we need to consider and study as part, part of getting a larger window to, to do that. They also talked about the flooding, like what below Greenpoint Avenue, which we already mentioned. So, so any other questions or comments?
It's Katie. I had a couple of questions. And so, Steve, do you have any sense if any of the other folks are also asking for an extension that we could combine forces, you know, say with any neighboring community boards? You know, because it makes a lot of sense to me, looking through the materials, that there is a lot to go through. And so I fully support the motion. I'm just wondering if, if we can be strategic about not being the only ones asking for an extension.
That's a good question. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know what's going on with CB one in Queens, because they lost, you know, they had a prominent member of the Newtown Creek CAG, and he moved out of state. So I don't know if, you know, you know, they're, they're privy to what's going on there. They have a park conservancy over there that'll, you know, in that park, Hunter's Point South in Gantry Plaza, held the same wall going down there, shoreline there. I was on a, a call with Rebuild by Design with representatives from all over the city. And that was, a common concern was the little, the small amount of time. And so, yes, I, yeah, I mean, I think it's, I mean, strength in numbers. I just don't know how we would combine that. I mean, that's maybe where our elected representatives, especially our, our federal, can pull the, you know, the question, this request citywide from New Jersey.
That makes sense. And I guess, Willis, do you mind, can I ask one more question? Or William? Sorry. If, if there is an extension that's granted, Steve, how do you see this process for feedback working with this community board? And then you can have it, William.
That's a good question. I mean, beyond, I, you know, beyond having a monthly meeting, say, for a few months, do we need to have like a task force or just more, more frequent meetings for a few months to, to compile the concerns and questions and, you know, a real detailed comment? And I don't know if activity will happen outside the board. I, I personally contacted Assembly Member Gallagher and Councilmember Wrestler's offices to figure out how we can mobilize community around this. So, so maybe there's a way that that process can be, you know, kind of brought into the community board. But, yeah, that's, I mean, it's something we need to, I think, think about how we want to attack this, assuming we get the larger, bigger window.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Steve, nice, Steve. Thank you. I just want to know, on the survey they gave to the same workshop that we've all attended, I recommended that they help us to facilitate connection with other community boards that are impacted. And because I remember those, I think it was CB ten, and also was a CB in Lower East Side. So that's one of the things I add. The other thing, I've been sharing that information to our neighbors who are experts, PhDs or college professors. So that's one thing I've been doing, getting more neighborhood talent, their technical expertise involved in this. Because, you know, this is beyond, this is so deep, this is so large, and, you know.
Yeah, no, it's, and it's, yeah, and I think we absolutely need to bring in expertise into these discussions when we have them. Just thinking, this thing, it's not going to be built for us. It's going to be built for our children and their grandchildren. This is for the future.
We talked about getting some of our local community colleges involved, so they could be, be involved. Because they're going to have to deal with this. And also be a place that's a good storage, it's intellectual on data or history we'll be collecting. Because I don't see this happening in my lifetime, you know.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Dell here. I have sort of a comment. I, I approve the, you know, I support the, the motion too. I was thinking, you know, it seems to me we're going to need some really skilled expertise to, and resources to help us to really have some, an opinion on this. I wonder if our electeds can, you know, lead us to something. I mean, it just seems that we, we have to really proactively try to get experts, you know. This is not, these questions really can only be really looked at and evaluated with some very, you know, special expertise, I think. So, I mean, colleges are okay, but maybe I don't know if our, some of our electeds have access to, to people and resources who can help us.
Yeah. No, I think that's a great idea. You know, I think just anywhere, anywhere we can solicit help to, to, and yeah, we need expertise to strengthen what we're, what we're dealing with here. Because we weren't provided beyond these, if you look at those images, it's just, you know, a kind of a marker outline of where, that are, you know, colorized depending on what type of infrastructure there is. So we're not really, we're not, like I said, we don't see a physical manifestation or rendering example of what these various pieces of infrastructure will look like, what they'll look like in the park, on the street. And that's, you know, it's, we need to extract that information. And how we can potentially approve something, we don't know what it, you know, what it's going to look like. And again, when Sante said about, the Corps has had some amazing successes technologically, but they've had some horribly horrible failures, like in New Orleans with the shipping channels that they created. And so, and if you look at the cost table that's in the slide presentation, the contingency costs, you know, contingencies for projects are usually like fifteen percent, right? If you have a construction job or a film shoot or catering job. Theirs is, theirs are for the various alternatives between fifty and sixty percent of unknown costs that they are predicting when they build this thing. You know, talking tens of millions of dollars. So, so I think they, we need to give them as much data as possible just to, to get this thing right. Or maybe, you know, maybe it's not right, you know. So, but yeah, these are all really good ideas. And I feel people are already kind of coming together, because this is obviously a super, super significant what they're planning for, changing our landscape, literally and figuratively. I can't hear you, Dell. I think your volume's, now you're muted. Still muted, yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, just, yeah, just kind of lowish volume, yeah.
I think their inability to give us details gives us a good justification for saying we need some people to help us study this because there's, we have a right to be concerned about this.
Yes.
Hi, everybody. My name is Emily Ruby. I just want to introduce myself. I'm a new, the new constituent liaison for Councilmember Wrestler. Having heard some, you know, folks' concerns about this plan regarding, you know, the new Army Corps of Engineers storm surge protection plan and how it impacts Greenpoint and Newtown Creek, I just want to say that with Wrestler's Office, we're actually discussing this tomorrow with Steve and other stakeholders, looking at how we can extend the comment period on this plan and sort of start to unpack what it, how it would impact our community and how we can get as much community engagement and involvement in that process. So I just wanted to introduce myself and say that this is something that we're aware of and that we are, you know, working to, you know, working on and dissecting this plan and how it will impact our community and get more folks involved.
Thank you.
So, who made?
Who made the motion?
Yeah, who make, make the motion?
William Vega.
I think that motion.
Is that Vega and Sante Machelli?
Yes.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Okay, Gina Agentl, Vaden Bakawati, Lisa Bonmonti.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Eric Wizites.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Paul Capernegro. Frank Cabon.
Yes.
Stephen Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Chantelli. Teresa Sincero. Stephanie Cuevas. Juan and Daly.
Yes.
Giovanni Di Amato.
Yes.
Aaron Dricwater. Arthur Di Banaski. Lloyd Fink. Julia Amanda Foster. Mr. Garcia. Joe Goldstein. Joe Gross. David Helmick.
Yes.
Sabrina Hope. Katie Danny Horowitz.
Yes.
Sony Glazias, yes. Moses Zending. Robert Jeffrey.
Yes.
Monzina Kaminsky. Cory Catton.
Yes.
Paul Kultaborn. William Glasbald.
Yes.
Yolando. Marilie Azar.
Yes.
Yolo. Gina McKever.
Yes.
Adam Myers.
Yes.
Sante Machelli. Sante.
Yes.
Thank you. Toby Marklewicz. Bye-bye David Niederman.
Yes.
Gavin Nieves. Maria Domeric.
Yes.
Dennis Peterson. Bella Sables. Bella. Thumbs up, Bella. Okay. Isaac Sopah.
Yes.
Del T.
Yes.
William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Viera. Maria. Oh, Su Maria. Oh, Simon Weiser. Simon. Well, Simon too. Can you hear me? I hear you now. What's your vote?
Dead.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm going in and out. Sorry.
Sweetie, but I saw your name. Thank you.
Do you hear Simon?
No, Simon, I hear you now. Yes, no, maybe so. What's your vote?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Twenty-six, yes. Zero no, zero absence, zero recusal, motion carries.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Okay, one more item.
Thank you.
The last item is revisiting a Bureau Standards Appeals Special Permit Request for three fifteen Berry Street. If you remember, it's a residential loft building between South Second and South Third, where this company wants to install a electrical substation on the roof comprised of a battery storage system. And based on recommendations from a joint land use committee and environmental protection committee meeting, where we had huge concerns about safety, about the integrity of the building, whether it can withstand the load of the system, and a breakdown in communication between tenants, the landlord and microgrid networks who wants to install the system. The board basically voted against the permit. And that was in 2021. So recently, the board was forwarded a revised application from the attorneys relating, related to this as they've been involved in ongoing hearings with the BSA, who, I watched some of them. And their, their concerns amplified, or even amplified in terms of what we had concerns, especially the safety element. And so after we received this revised application from the lawyers, tenants, residents in the building, sorry, sending us concerns and testimony. And so they attended the meeting and they, you know, about half a dozen of them just spoke, some of them lived there for over twenty years. And, you know, the key thing that's come up, and, you know, after, you know, after our vote last year was there have been major fires at facilities that have these battery storage systems. There was one in Arizona a couple of years ago where four firefighters were injured upon entering the facility because of outgassing and thermal runaway from these lithium ion batteries, which, you know, the same battery, similar batteries that you see in mobile devices, like e-bikes and laptops and hoverboards, et cetera. And if you've seen the news reports, but there have been hundreds of, you know, fires started by these batteries in these vehicles. And two hundred of them have been in buildings, starting buildings with fires. Now, the, the microgrid network's using a different system, but still it's troublesome. And then there was another fire in Arizona, similar situation. It took five days to extinguish the blaze. And then in China, last year, in Beijing, at a department store, on a department store roof, there was a fire that killed two firefighters, and it used a similar chemical composition to what microgrid is planning for three fifteen Berry. But I saw, you know, some declarations, they're claiming their technology is still different from that. Still, it's just ma- major concerns, you know, you know. The Fire Department issued a new letter of no objections, basically citing that they have better access to the roof and that the DOB basically certified the building as able to withstand the load of this system. But it's, it's quite evident that extinguishing these types of fires seems very challenging. It uses, needs, requires an enormous amount of water. It's been estimated the amount of water they would need to put out a fire on this roof would probably collapse the roof. And you can utilize a dry extinguishing type of compound, but that has to be manually initiated. It can't, it isn't automatically triggered like sprinkler system. So, so just hearing, you know, tenants' written testimony emphasizing this, because, you know, what also has come out from them, they provided some video clips from hearings from the BSA, is that the BSA has a new chair who's taken over from the previous one who was leading, you know, the issues, these prime issues. There's a shift, they've shifted more towards worrying about the zoning, whether, you know, there's reason, weighing the benefits of, you know, just, you know, safety and compatibility, just, you know, in terms of use groups and et cetera. And that safety concerns really should be taken up by other agencies. So they're kind of, you know, taking a different approach, kind of kicking the can, so to speak. And so that, and I think our committee found that to be alarming along with these residents. So we, we basically put out a consensus recommendation, motion to write a letter to the Fire Department, basically noting that their letter of objection did not address the challenges of extinguishing a fire like this and how they would go about doing that. And, and then we want to forward this letter to the BSA as, as testimony, urging them to, to consider, you must consider the safety issues in terms of you're going to value essentially, you know, property value. you're going to value, um, essentially, um, you know, property value and, yeah, I know, I mean, you know, the, the, this would potentially be a huge step technologically in terms of climate change, adapting to climate change, because it would basically, um, soar energy off the grid and it's a very, there's an overloaded, overloaded grid nearby. And you would need less, you would rely less on, say, a peaker power plant like the one that's, you know, on the waterfront, um, near Grand Ferry Park. But that said, I feel like, and I, you know, I personally, I'm gung ho about doing everything we can to move forward and, and adapting and evolving with technologies to reduce, you know, greenhouse gases to zero, et cetera. But not at expense of, you know, being reckless and endangering, um, families and homes, et cetera. So, um, so the committee felt strongly, you know, about, we had unanimous vote yes to, um, to write these two letters, one to the fire department requesting they, um, detail how they, they would extinguish a fire like this, citing the issues with the amount of water and the, the amount of time it takes to extinguish a fire like this and to forward that to the BSA, urging them to consider these safety issues and, um, the FDNY's, um, response. Um, we are also, we're, we're going to invite the FDNY to the board to speak. Um, but I'm just, you know, I'm just going to make that request. So you need a motion?
Sonia. Sonia makes the motion.
I, I have a question.
I'm going to have a question too.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, you, you cited some prominent examples of big and terrible fires, but I guess, I'm, I'm curious what the denominator is. How many of these systems are out there and how many of them are in residential buildings like this, or do we know?
I understand there is zero, like there is zero in, there definitely is zero in the city. They, there are installations, uh, like sports venues and, um, you know, manufacturing buildings. And I think there is, there is one potentially at a, in a housing complex, but it's located on the ground. It's not on, on the roof, but, uh, but this would be, I think, believe the first one, um, in the city that would be installed on top of a residential building.
And when we voted against this, there were none. And that wasn't that long ago.
Yep, so I, Del T is correct, I also did some research. This will be the first in the country, so there's no doubt. Period. Also, Steve, I think we mentioned we wanted to see, see, um, Lincoln and Wrestler as well as Emma Gallagher to get them involved.
Mm-hmm.
This will be set up a precedent, never before, and, um, I don't, um, and the building hasn't been well kept, let's just leave it like that.
Yeah, there was an issue, um, back, you know, in 2021, that there's a crumbling, deteriorating facade of the building. There's a question whether the actual stability of the building is, was, um, contributing to that. Um, it was the, um, doing structural analysis to determine it's not, and D O B basically.
Steven, Steve, I'm sorry, it's that you said South Third? And between South Third and South Fourth, is it, or?
Second, second, second and third.
I'm Berry, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm on the, I'm in the opposite corner and that building does not look like, yep, it's not being well kept, I live right there in that area.
Yeah, that was a major, that was brought up very strongly during, you know, last year. So, yep. Um, but I feel like, you know, the board already essentially weighed in on the, you know, to grant the special permit. Um, but I feel like what we're doing here is emphasizing a problem, you know, just, um, there's a safety issue here with, uh, the, you know, the technology and the mix between a residential building and this type of technology. Um, I feel like this company, they're, they seem, you know, um, there's, you know, a lot, a lot of good to say about them, you know, they know, they know their science, et cetera, but, um, I don't know, I just feel, I think, uh, Madam Chair, I think you, you wrote a letter to their represent, to their consultants, the Capellino, basically citing just how can we, we can't get behind something like this, just knowing, knowing the risks. Um, no matter how noble the, the, you know, the intentions and the cause, the cause is, so.
Okay, Del, second to motion, right?
Yeah, second to motion.
You have a roll call vote, please. Gina Argento. Fadim Bakawaski. Lisa Bonati.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Eric Wazites.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Phil Capernegro. Frank Cabon. Steve Chessler.
Yes.
Michael Chantelli. Teresa Sinclaro. Stephanie Cuevas. Juan and Daly.
Yes.
Giovanni Di Amaro.
Yes.
Eric, Aaron Drinkwater. Arthur Divanaski. Lloyd Feng. Julia Amanda Foster. Cristo Garcia. Joe Goldstein. Joe Gross. David Helmick. David? Sabrina Help. Katie Danny Horowitz.
Yes.
Sony Iglesias, yes. Moses Zending. Robert Jeffrey.
Yes.
Bonzina Kaminsky. Cory Catton. Cory Catton?
Yes.
Paul Kultuborn. William Glasbord.
Yes.
Yolando. Marie Liaza.
Yes.
Yolo. Trina McKiver.
Yes.
Adam Myers.
Yes.
Santi Machelli.
Yes.
Toby Markowitz. Rabbi David Needleman.
Yes.
Karen Nieves. Maria Dahmerick.
Yes.
Dennis Peterson. Bella Sables. Yes. Isaac Sofa. Del T.
Yes.
William Vega.
Yes.
With, uh, Maria Viera. Maria. Simon Weiser. Simon Weiser.
Yes, yes.
This is Maria, I'm, yes. I'm going to have to stay unmuted. Thank you. This, this is not working.
Do you hear me, Simon?
Yes, thank you. Sonia, did you get me? Yes, Maria. Got you. I'm sorry, guys, we got 23, but that's not the quorum, so I don't know what happened. Madam Chair? We got 23, I don't know, we lost people, people are not answering, but we got 23, that's not, not enough.
Did you vote, Sonia?
Yes, I voted. Well, we have 31 people in this meeting, why we have 23? Come on, guys, wake up.
I think you should try it again, maybe you missed up.
Yeah, let me try again, because I, I called the numbers out, I mean, I see people, but they have to answer, I can't. That's why I say loud with Bella, but you gotta answer people. Gina Argento. Fadim Bakawaski. Lisa Bonati.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Eric Wazites.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Phil Capernegro. Frank Cabon. Steve Chessler.
Yes.
Michael Chantelli. Teresa Sinclaro. Stephanie Cuevas. Juan and Daly.
Yes.
Giovanni Di Amaro.
Yes.
Aaron Drinkwater. Arthur Divanaski. Lloyd Feng. Julia Amanda Foster, Foster. Cristo Garcia. Joe Goldstein. Joe Gross. David Helmick. Sabrina Help. Katie Danny Horowitz.
Yes.
Sony Iglesias, yes. Moses Zending. Robert Jeffrey.
Yes.
Bonzina Kaminsky. Cory Catton.
Yes.
Paul Kultuborn. William Glasbord.
Yes.
Yolando. Marie Liaza.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Yolo. Trina McKiver.
Yes.
Adam Myers.
Yes.
Santi Machelli.
Yes.
Toby Markowitz. Rabbi David Needleman.
Yes.
Karen Nieves. Maria Dahmerick.
Yes.
Danny Peterson. Bella Sables. Bella?
Yeah.
Okay. Isaac Sofa. Del T.
Yes.
William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Viera.
Yes.
Simon Weiser.
Yes.
So 23, don't have a quorum, sorry, guys.
What about, well, David and Frank are on the call.
And Isaac.
But they're not answering, I need an answer. Where, where David?
Why don't you try just to call out those who did not respond?
Who says on the line that does try to answer? Excuse me, saying somebody was on the line to answer. Frank Cabon. I see his name there, but he doesn't answer, but remember, this is recorded, so we have to get an answer, at least some kind.
And David Heimlich and Isaac Soper.
David Helmick.
Isaac Soper.
David, David has my, David Helmick, he has my number, let him text me.
Isaac just said something.
Yes, I heard Isaac Soper.
Isaac Soper, yes.
Okay.
Point of order, that's 24, and the chair who doesn't vote is 25, that's a quorum.
Okay.
I just saw Frank, Frank, are you there?
Frank Cabon?
His mic is.
We can't hear you.
Mike is on, he's trying.
Island 48th Street.
Did you hear my vote, Simon?
We got the both, Simon.
Thank you.
Well, we have 24 plus the chair, that's a quorum.
Let's move on before we lose, we can't afford to lose any more people.
Wait, wait.
Mr. Bresidis, it, uh, the chair only votes if there's a tie.
Yes, I, yes, I know, but there's a, but there is a quorum in the room. Uh, we don't need to have 25 votes, we just need a quorum of, of members. I think that's correct.
Okay, so we have 24, yes, zero no, zero abstention. So we cool those motions carries.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you, guys, let's speed it up before we lose our quorum.
Madam Chair.
Please, we got other, we got other reports that has to be voted on. So I'm asking everybody's patience to, uh, try to stay on, so we don't have to have another team to do these votes.
Madam Chair, the SLA Review Committee, the chair actually called me, uh, while we're having this conversation, and unfortunately, he couldn't, he couldn't attend the meeting and no Bogdan, the co-chair, and so he asked me if I could present the report. I believe he tried to speak with Joanna at the office too, uh, so that the report could be approved. Um, so he asked me if I could act as a co-chair.
We'll have, we'll have to do everything in a timely manner, so we don't lose our, uh, quorum, because we won't be able to do any more voting.
Uh, sure, as you ask, as you asked that before, you called before the SLA Committee, uh, so I'm here if you want, so I can present.
I'm going to have the people that I call, I'm going to have to come back to you.
Okay.
Chair, I, I have, I have to leave in time.
Okay, let's not waste time. Uh, transportation, we got to the B rule, everybody know what the B rule is? Be brief, be bright and be gone.
As, as written, Madam Chair, and, uh, just got a text from Gina Argento, who is actually on the call.
Who?
Gina Argento is in the room, on the call, but cannot unmute. So she is.
Tell, tell her to call the officer and give her a vote.
Understood.
Okay, so, uh, Eric's report is going to be as written?
Yes, as written.
I have a question about transportation, it's, it's your.
Go ahead, Del.
Eric, you, uh, your report mentions that there are some safety concerns about Trader Joe's, I was just wondering what they were.
Uh, yeah, so there's been, um, traffic congestion and some other problems with the loading zone, uh, with Trader Joe's, um, that need to be addressed, we need to take that up at a future meeting, maybe January.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Okay, public safety? Yeah, honey?
Yep, Chair Fuller.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, quickly, um, David just, David Helmick just voted, so. I've, I've changed the number 25, okay, you just got it.
Okay, Joanna, if anybody called, uh, you can interrupt us and give them, give us their vote, okay?
Uh, Chair Fuller, I just want to, um, I just want to let everyone know that if they're going to sign in with a number, they need to call me and let me know that, because with the WebEx system, I could only see the last numbers.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Go ahead, Daly.
Um, so I can, I can either do as Transportation Committee just did and submit my port, my report as it was in writing, or I can go through now, it's your preference.
Okay, yours is going to be as written, you're going to submit it, because you got it in late today, right? We got to get these reports in on time, so the committee can have time to read them before the meeting. Okay, uh, Maria, are you, can you, uh, you want to do your, uh, report on board budget?
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
So I submitted the report probably around two, three weeks ago, perhaps everyone read it, but I think the most important thing, or maybe not, I shouldn't assume, I think the most important thing is that there are expenses that are not actually being drawn down because there was an issue identified where in order to pay some of the services, um, like the telephone and things of that nature, there needs to be, there have to be two signatories on the account, and currently there were, at least when we met, there was only one, and that was Joanna, which was actually holding up the payments, which can impact whether or not we have phone service at the district office. Um, so I don't know if those things have been, have been addressed to date, because again, this was, these were the circumstances as of October 20th, when we met, this is already December. As I said, the, the, the report was submitted and I unfortunately wasn't able to attend the prior month's meeting. Um, so, um, this is to me the most important thing to report, and that is that we're still ha, not at the place where we are able to identify a DM and one of the suggestions that were made, and I know that Joanna is listening, but it is what it is, and it's written, is to nominate Joanna as interim DM, as she is currently fulfilling the role, and I don't know if that's something specific to board budget, but it's raised then, so I have to be transparent and mention it as it is written. Um, and all, another concern is the monitoring of the board's personnel budget, where normally what is reviewed by the board budget committee is the OTPS, other than personnel expenses, not necessarily the, the personnel expenses, and I think that in order for us to fulfill a complete role, it is important, and for transparency, it is important that we have access to that budget as well, and that when there are meetings taking place to discuss the budget, that, that those conversations are part of the meeting. Um.
A few words for you.
Yeah.
And, 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 and I think that, that is primarily, in a nutshell, what was discussed, there was an unspent balance of $166 to close out the 2022 fiscal year. Um, and that was because there was money due to the temp agency that we hired, we as a board hired to, to, to provide a, a temp worker during, um, um, Marie Bueno's absence. Um, for whatever reason, the temp agency didn't bill within the time period that was allowed for it to be counted as fiscal year 2022. So that $166 sat there and it was unspent. However, um, OMB allowed it to be, it gave us an extension, not a no-cost extension, but an extension to pay it out in fiscal year 23, which is very strange. Instead of giving a no-cost extension, they said, no, you can't use it, but we'll just let you use money from next year to. Instead of giving a no-cost extension, they said, no, you can't use it, but we'll just let you use money from next year to pay last year. Um, but, you know, I, I'm, I, trying to figure out OMB, I, I, I think that's above my pay grade right now. Um, so, um, that is primarily most of the, well, to me, the, the most outstanding things that we should focus on moving forward, that is identifying this DM, um, or the, the funds to do so, and figuring out how we can provide resources to Joanna, um, in order for her to execute the duties and responsibilities that are necessary in order to have a functional district office. That is it from me, thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you so much, no questions, I appreciate it. Either I was really good, or you guys are all confused, one of the two.
I have a question, Del, I, I, um, does this mean that Joanna cannot sign to have our, our, our phone bills paid?
If, if you like, I could answer that.
Okay.
It's not the, it's not the phone bills, it's the, uh, the phone bills are taken care of by Do-It. Um, it's the alarm, um, our mailing system, um, some of these items. Uh, but Brooklyn Borough Hall was able to, um, help out with the two approvals. So they're gonna, every time I do a per, a purchase order or payment request, it's sent to Brooklyn Borough Hall to approve. So we're doing it that way. Um, the passaport system, that is a little bit more complicated, is different from FMS. Uh, that system, um, you do need two people. Uh, Mox, who, um, said they will do it for one, for one time only, they approved one of the orders, which it was the water. Um, but they were very strict about it, they do need two people from the office, uh, to approve, once I do the purchase order, two people have to approve it. So right now, we're okay with the FMS system, the passaport system, if we do need something from there, that's gonna be an issue. Um, like, the storehouse is where we get our supplies, uh, that is, they put that in the system, um, passaport now. So if you need something from there, it is gonna need two approvals of staff.
This is Simon, I wanna make a point also.
By the way, just to clarify, Mox stands for Mayor's Office of Contract Services, for those that don't know what that, um, what it means.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Simon.
Simon, you said you had a comment or a question on this?
Yeah, 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 I was talking with the Chair about, uh, about, you know, we're gonna, we have to advertise the city manager's position, and also the issue came up, uh, if you wanna put it on certain websites that they charge a fee, how we're gonna approve for that, so I just wanted to piggybank on the issues that was discussed before. How, how we're gonna get it approved, we need two signatures, you know, I'm just, just a point to, to, to raise.
Mr. Weiser?
Um... Yes?
That is, we will have to find out, um, the vendor, if they're using, uh, if they're going through the FMS system or the passaport system. So if they're going through the passaport system, then we're definitely gonna need two signatures, and we don't have the staff. As of FMS, we could probably get Brooklyn Borough Hall to help us approve it. So it just depends on what system they're, they're in.
Can the Board President sign?
Uh, the Borough President's office could only sign for FMS. Uh, in the past, we, I tried to get them to help us out with the passaport system, and they said they were unable to do that.
Can Simon sign with you?
I, no, I think it has to be staff.
It has to be a staff.
Right.
Well, you don't have another staff member.
We don't have another staff, but we've been working back and forth with the agents, the eight, the office is running as smoothly as we can run it, but we can't continue the way we are with just one staff person.
But it's only, it's only, it only becomes an issue if the vendor's using the passaport system. So the question is to find out if the vendor's using FMS or passaport. If they're using FMS, then yes, the Brooklyn Borough Hall could help us out.
So Joanna, just to clarify, is it, do, do you not need to process requisitions, payment requisitions via passport?
It depends if they were moved to passaport, because they were, um, some of the FMS contracts were being moved to passaport, so not everything is in passaport yet. So it just depends.
Can you define FMS?
FMS is, um, the system that we were using before, and is the financial system, the city financial system. Which is what we use for purchase orders and payment requests before passaport. Uh, and passaport was created to, uh, eventually replace FMS.
So the bottom line is that there's a bottleneck, if you don't, if we don't identify someone to fulfill that role, we're stuck. So any expenses that need to be made can't be made, because when you request payment, in order to, to, to process the payment, you need two signatures, and we only have one.
Right.
So first, we're not able to draw down on that budget for necessary items and supplies, and second, we're just not able to identify a person, because we also have a budget issue. Um, a, a, and financial issue and a budget issue. Madam Chair, I don't know, um, if this is an old hand or a new hand, but my, I'm now able to see at least names and hands. Um, Councilmember Lincoln Ressler's hand is up.
So he probably wants to speak.
Yeah, but I'm happy to, to speak as well on this. Um, the, uh, Maria, we're happy to follow up with, with the leadership at Mox, talk to Lisa, see what flexibility we can find within passport on the approvals here. If a board member could be temporarily designated or some other solution, so if you want, I, I'll just, I'll send you a note after this, and let's figure out how we wanna... I'm happy to coordinate, help with outreach to Mox to try to get some flexi, flexibility. Passport is a good development, it makes everybody's lives a whole lot easier than FMS. Um, we should be able to find a workaround.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions, the hands up? The hands was never removed.
Del's, Del's hand has been up, she's like a Statue of Liberty.
Okay, uh, moving right along, um, Michele, um, that's LA.
Uh, Shaw, good evening, everybody, um, as you heard, the Chair couldn't attend the meeting, no the Co-Chair, so I was last minute asked if I could ask you, uh, to approve the report, the, the committee met on November twenty-eighth, Densley, uh, Senior Center, the Densley Street Senior Center, and seven members of the committee were present, there were other, uh, random community member, uh, present in the room together with the applicant, and, uh, so we ask you to approve, uh, the report as a, as a, it is written. Can I have your approval?
When they make the motion?
Second, Eric.
I second, okay. Onion Eric, roll call vote, please. Gina Argento.
Yes.
Adam Bakroski. Gina?
Yes, Sonia, you heard me, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes. Lisa Bomonti.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Eric Poseides.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Phil Caponegro. Frank Carbone.
Yes.
Steve Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Chinchelli. Stephanie Cuevas. Marlon Daly.
Yes.
Giovanni Di Amato.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater. Arthur Divanaski, Lloyd Feng, Julia Mas, Amanda Foster, Cristo Garcia, Joe Goldstein, Joe Gross. David Homick.
Yes.
Sabrina Help. Katie Denny Horowitz.
Yes.
Toni Iglesias, yes, Moses Zending. Robert Jeffrey.
Yes.
Posina Kamiski. Cory Canton.
Yes.
Paul Kiltovon. William Klasberg. Klasberg, William? Yolando. Marilyaiza.
Yes.
Thank you. Yolo. Trina McKeva.
Yes.
Adam Myers.
Yes.
Dante Michele.
Yes.
Toby Muskowitz. Rabbi David Needleman.
Yes.
Karen Nieves. Mario Dahmerick.
Yes.
Dennis Peterson. Bella Sables. Bella, okay, yes. Isaac Sofer.
Yes.
Del T.
Yes.
William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Viera.
Yes.
Diamond Weiser.
Yes.
Thank you. Twenty-seven, yes, there were no civil sessions, there will be cruise, or motion carries.
One final comment, Madame Chair, on, on legal license, uh, the next meeting is gonna be January fifth. Uh, and another additional comment on the new license are gonna come next month, you saw on the, on our general agenda. Uh, I have received a couple of, actually, of concerning, uh, comments from the community. Uh, one in particular that I know in Greenpoint is this address, so for every community member and board member, just, uh, be aware of that, it's seventy-two Noble Street, Ferris Athletic. Uh, uh, very controversial, uh, request for a gym, uh, open to children, they start opening a program, it advertises uh, to twenty-one years or plus with music, right now, they say bring your own bottles. Uh, so they ask him for a beer or wine, it seems innocent, but it's hundred and thirty thousand square ti, square feet facility. Uh, double address, seventy-two fifty-six West, uh, many, uh, violation tons, uh, just gone the DOB. Uh, unquestionable, uh, non-existent, uh, certificate occupancy. Uh, so once again, now we have a request for a beer and wine, and something should be a gym, seems to be open to kids, but hundred and thirty thousand square feet in a residential, smaller scale neighborhood. Just adds up to everybody who hears that, uh, uh, so, yeah, major concern. There's other, you should look through that, but it's very questionable, so, but thank you very much, uh, thank you, everybody, and happy holiday, holiday if I don't see you earlier on, bye.
Thank you for giving the reports, that, Michele, we really appreciate it. Next is, uh, Parks Minute, as read, electeds. Um, Councilman, uh, Ressler, you still on, would you like to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, I'm here, I'm here. I'm sorry about that, nice to see you all, um, sorry. Great, it's nice to see you, I'm sorry, I'm just making my way back from tenant meeting, down at Pfeffer Gardens, uh, where unfortunately Kraus is proposing a draconian massive multi-year rent increase for the affordable housing tenants there. So we're doing what we can to push back, there'll be a public hearing on that in January, but it is wet out here, so I hope everybody's home and dry. Uh, there's been a lot of exciting stuff happening across the thirty-third, first and foremost, I just wanna wish everybody happy holidays. I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving with their families, and that they are, um, and that folks are gonna have a wonderful Hanukkah, Christmas, Kwanzaa, whatever you're celebrating, uh, uh, in the weeks ahead. Uh, there've been a number of environmental updates of note, uh, we've had a, I think, a good first meeting of the, um, relating to the Meeker Avenue CAG, the new Superfund site in Eastern Greenpoint and East Williamsburg, we had about a hundred neighbors turn out for that. So if folks are interested in getting involved in that community advisor group, we need more neighbors, especially people who are directly impacted by the Meeker Avenue plumes, um, to get involved in the CAG, so please reach out to us if we can be helpful in, in plugging you in there, if you have any questions. Um, we're excited to see that move forward. Hopefully, it'll move forward at a much more aggressive clip than what we've been experiencing up at Newtown Creek, uh, where the EPA has just said, I think formally, that, uh, you know, we're a decade away from any potential resolution. Uh, it's a totally unacceptable timeline, we're gonna put a lot of pressure on the EPA, um, and work with, uh, community leaders, like Newtown Creek Alliance and others. Um, and of course, our new Congresswoman, uh, Nidia Velazquez is back, representing Greenpoint, and she will help us spearhead the efforts to hold EPA accountable, hold the responsible parties like Exxon and Chevron and others accountable, to see the creek cleaned up and cleaned up right, and the, and the necessary investments made in our community. Uh, we're working on a number of exciting pieces of legislation, uh, uh, in the council. Uh, we held a, a hearing last night, uh, last week, on an oversight hearing on helicopters, where we've been getting a lot of complaints about helicopter noise. Uh, so we're trying to put pressure to eliminate nonessential travel from helicopters, this is a bill I've introduced. Uh, we're passing a resolution tomorrow that, um, I'm the lead sponsor on, uh, to call on the state's, uh, CLCPA, the Climate Action Council, who is the group that's been formed, uh, over the last number of months to, uh, put together specific policies to drive down carbon emissions across the state of New York. Uh, so we, we authored a legislation in the council, uh, to give specific guidance to the Climate Action Council on how they should drive down their emissions. So we're excited to see that, uh, move forward. We're working on some legislation to offer some thoughtful regulations to the film and television industry that we'll be, uh, announcing. Uh, we really value and support the film and television industry in our office, and of course, in, in North Brooklyn. Um, but thinking about what's a, an appropriate amount of, of film shoots or television shoots on, on a single block, is something that, uh, I think merits regulation. And unfortunately, there hasn't been any, uh, for as long as I can recall, so we're excited to, to try and help move that forward. Um, we're doing a big toy drive, uh, so feel free to drop off toys at our office, we're gonna be at McGolrick this Sunday. The friends in McGolrick Park are also gonna be out there from ten to one, uh, doing a volunteer cleanup. But if you have any toys or, uh, books or anything, come drop them off, and we'll make sure that they get to nicer developments in our community. Um, there's a whole lot more good stuff happening, but those are some quick things. I did also just wanna introduce, we have a new colleague on our team, Emily Ruby, who I believe is on here, and Emily is terrific, she's our new kind of organizer focused on Greenpoint and the north side, so if you're in those neighborhoods, start getting to know Emily. Uh, she is a native Brooklynite with a lot of environmental organizing experience, political experience, we're excited to have her on the team. Um, so thank you, Chair Fuller, for the opportunity to say hello, um, and, and just wanna thank everyone on TV One for the work you do on behalf of our community, and we're happy to help follow up on the passport issue and anything else that we can do during this, this challenging time.
Thank you so much, Councilman, uh, happy holidays, be safe, be healthy.
Thank you.
Uh, Daniel Bruno from the BP's office. Daniel Bruno from the BP's office.
Uh, thank you, Chair Fuller, can you hear me? Great, thank you so much, uh, so again, we're going Daniel from Brooklyn Borough Hall. Thanks for the time and all the work so far, I'm gonna keep it short since it's so late. Um, very importantly, community board applications are now open. Um, they're open for two weeks now, and they will go through February fourteenth. They are available on the Borough President's website. Um, you can complete them using the online portal, or download a PDF version that can either be mailed in or hand-delivered. Uh, so again, it's Brooklynites, eight sixteen and up. Uh, members whose term is expiring in twenty-twenty-three should have received an email, a form, mail, and such, and the instructions for reappointment, you have to apply to be reconsidered, so just making sure that folks know that now. Uh, and a couple of important dates that we have, uh, please save the date for the Borough President's State of the Borough on January tenth, two thousand twenty-three, at six thirty PM. We're gonna give a, address on all the work that Brooklyn Borough has done so far, and the state of things just generally in the borough. We have weekly constituent walk-ins, open every Wednesday from nine-eight to three PM here at Brooklyn Borough Hall. Um, so that's a resource, and we'll also have folks every Thursday at the Brooklyn Central Library, right next to, uh, Prospect Park. And on a more festive note, uh, please, you are all invited to come down to Brooklyn Borough Hall Plaza, right behind me, at two or nine Joralema Street. We're gonna have a tree lighting, um, that's gonna happen from five, six PM, super festive, and there'll be characters. Um, and yeah, just wanna make note that we're paying attention to the meeting all night, so we're aware of things that are going on with Mox and passport. Um, and we're also aware of the issues, um, worth the proposed, uh, changes by Donald Corbinger, so we'll be reaching out to the electeds as well to support the community in any way we can, thank you all.
Mr. Bruno.
Thank you, Bruno, just wanna make a note that our board meeting is also January tenth.
Yeah. Yeah. Madam Chair? Bruno's still there?
I'm here.
Yeah. When you submit the application, I submitted, but we just say, it says thank you. When do you know? When do they send the confirmation or the appointment, the appointments?
Sorry, yeah, if you got the thank you, that means it went in as a regarding next steps, that probably won't be into the new year because it's gonna take us a little while to compile them. We are responding to those on a rolling basis mostly. But just for, just for like a timeframe, we're also doing outreach workshops in January. So it's still in the collecting outreach phase, so there'll be a little bit of time.
Thank you. Also, you didn't give a date on the tree lighting.
Oh, that's this Thursday.
Bruno, you should also tell, you should also tell the board what, what's the cutoff date for getting the applications then.
Oh, my apologies. I must have ran through that. That's February, February 14th.
Thank you.
What a lovely day.
Thank you so much, Bruno. Really appreciate you giving us the updates. Have a great holiday. Be healthy, be safe. Is there any other business?
Yes, Madam Chair, Steve Chesler.
Yes.
I just, is there an update on the district manager hiring process?
The committee has scheduled a meeting for the 8th. We've made a check on all the up, on the things that I told you last night that we were doing. So we have to get back and now this step is to figure out where we gonna advertise it, how we gonna advertise it, and will we have to have money to advertise it. So that, that meeting is taking place the 8th this Thursday. So the committee is ver, I really appreciate the committee. They're working very hard on this. It's all new territory for everybody, but we're getting through it, and we're trying to get, do it as expedient as possible. But hopefully, if this meeting goes well and everybody agree on everything, hopefully the application can be advertised by next week, hopefully. Are there any other questions on that?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are the district manager roles advertised through the general NYC jobs hiring portal, or are they outside the, the city government proper?
Well, the one that they gave us, it requires funding. You know, we went through Borough Hall to get them, get an idea, you know, to give us who they list with, so that the company that they gave us, so Simon has to find out, like Joanna was explaining, if they are in this portal or that portal, whether we can take money. Otherwise, I think what we're gonna have to do is just start free advertising and put it on our website in order to get it out there, to be as expedient as possible. If we can't get the money to do it, you know, we're just gonna have to try to do free advertisement.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we just, we want to get it out there as, as fast as possible by any means that we can because, you know, money's gonna tie up, tie us up. That could take forever. So, you know, we could put it on our website, and we got local papers. I already spoke with Green Line. Green Line said they will put it in their paper. So any other local papers like the Brooklyn Paper, AM New York, you know, we're gonna try to get, probably try to get them to advertise it for us. But we could put it on our website and that, you know, that'll cover. And then people can get it out through that. They can direct people to the website. So these are the ideas now that, you know, that I'm having. The committee has to agree on them.
Madam Chair, this is Cory Canton. Once we have the job description, I would think that, you know, given that we are the community board, that, you know, we could also work as a force in trying to find candidates and spreading it through, you know, our networks.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Once it go on to our website, you know, then you can, you can spread it out there, you know, among the community and beyond the community. Because, you know, the way it looks now, you know, getting, getting money at this date to try to pay for it, from what I see, to add without cheat, you know. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, this is William Vega. Maybe we can ask elected officials to also assist, once it's formalized, to their networks. Thank you.
Pardon me?
I'm sorry. I'm just saying, once it's formalized, maybe we can ask, you know, Lick and Ressler, Emily Gallagher, our local elected officials to also put in their networks to spread the word that we're looking for positions.
Well, I don't know if they're allowed to do that. I'm not sure.
It's a question to ask. Thank you.
Yeah, you know, well, feel free to ask somebody that wanted to commit enough. Because this committee got their handful. You know, so we, you know, we got, we got, we got the verbiage of, you know, we have people to go to verbiage, so we know that we're in line with the city hiring policy, you know. So it was a lot. It's a lot. So right now, we've gotten all that together, so the next step is getting it out. Any other questions? Any other comments? Is there any new business? Here and none.
Happy holidays, everyone.
I would like to wish everybody happy holiday. Be healthy, be safe. And we will see each other next year, same place, same time, same station. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Good night, everyone. Happy holidays. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, John Boy.